Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna Leep. I'm Assistant Superintendent of the Southwest Vermont Supervisor Union. It is March 13, 2013, and this is the Board of Directors meeting for the Shaffberry School District. It is the one meeting of the year that I get to open the meeting so that the Board can reorganize in terms of their officers and positions on the Board. And so our first item of business is to nominate for the Chair of the School District. So we are taking nominations. Anyone care to nominate?
I can nominate Jen Kenny, please.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Would you like a ballot or would you wish to elect by acclamation? I outlined that word right here so that I would know what that was. That means that you would just raise your hand and say who you would want to vote for.
Is it customary to vote by ballot this way?
There's multiple.
Some schools you have to offer it, that's right.
Yeah, if there's two or three, usually did that.
The absence of a second candidate, I suggest we do it by acclamation.
Excellent, I agree. All in favor?
I'll vote for myself.
I think that you are approved as the Chair of the Shaffberry Board. So now you may take over the meeting.
Now we have this, okay. Thank you. Okay. Now we need a nomination for the Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations?
What if you don't hear it?
What's that?
What if you don't hear it?
Thank you.
Who is the Vice Chair now? Who was the Vice Chair?
I don't know.
Remember she took it away from you last year.
She did.
Oh, yeah. It was a rule there.
Yeah, I'm not, you don't want to get involved in that.
I'm not going there.
We might need a secret ballot for this one.
Yes, if anybody would like to nominate somebody else. We need a second.
Need a second.
I got a second.
All right.
So now discussion.
Discussion.
Before we vote, there's another office has to be filled too, right? A Clerk's position.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
You're planning to run for that, I hope.
I am not.
Pat's not here.
Well, I think you are. For Dave, but anyway, we've got to work on this one first.
You've got to vote.
So no dis- hearing, no discussion, all in favor of Jen Arwada for Vice Chair.
Aye.
Okay. Now the next one is for the Clerk. Do I hear nominations for the Clerk?
Nominate Dave.
I nominate Larry.
Oh, Jesus.
You have to wait until we see if they have a second on yours, Dave, before you can...
Wow.
Did you get a second on...
Yes, you do.
Oh, you need a second.
And Pat is, we can't just...
Who's second is who?
To him, by default.
We can't?
Who's second is who?
Just say it's him.
We don't have a second yet.
You can do that. And then everybody vote for him.
The problem, yeah.
Except that might have us...
So...
What's the role of the Clerk?
You take any letters that need to be written to a certain, like to the Select Board or anything, or to the Central Office, anything like, you take notes. If Rister Bump is not here, then you would be doing the minutes.
Well, no, you just collect data.
Well, yeah.
I work for minutes from there, but executive session, action after executive session, you do and all that sort of stuff.
Or sometimes the budget meetings where you weren't able to attend.
I'll do it. Okay. You guys want to fight it out first, or?
Do you want to do it, like?
I second David.
Thank you. All in favor of David Durfee as Clerk? Aye.
That's how you move up the ladder, too.
All right.
I think I've gone as high as I can go.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah, I did my clerk meeting.
Right. Okay, the next, we have the Representatives for the SVSU. And this year it's only two. I suggest we have Larry Johnson, and I'd like to do it myself, and Jen Arwada as an alternate, if that's okay with everybody. I don't think we have to take a vote on that, but we can.
You'd probably do it for the Clerk.
Should, okay.
Well, I mean, if that's fine with you.
I'd really like to continue.
Continue, yeah.
Okay.
I would like to continue, too, but there's just...
Well, you may get your chance.
Right.
Well, alternates are welcome to attend. You can either attend or not attend.
Right.
But that makes kind of a nice option for you.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Okay, very good.
I did.
Jen, you're in.
Yeah.
And Larry's seconded.
Yep.
In the alternate, twenty assignments. Okay, the committee assignments. We already have David on ESP negotiations, but he's going to update us tonight on executive session. We have food service. You want to do that, Jen?
I'm still on that.
Okay, all right, good.
Are you happy with all of them?
The technology.
Yeah, yeah.
Were you doing technology, Larry, SVSU?
I didn't know.
Okay, so we need one for that.
We were confused about that one last year.
Oh, Pat, oh, that's right.
Pat.
I wonder if, I'll put him on it if that's okay, unless somebody else wants to do it. I know he's not here, but we'll put him on it.
Is that a committee that, is, that's a committee, an SU committee? It's not a within the school?
I think it's within the school. I believe Tim's on that committee. The SVSU committee?
SVSU.
It is an SU committee.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right, so I'll put Pat.
So has Pat been able to attend those meetings?
Has he been at those meetings, Tim?
I believe he went to one. We haven't had a lot.
Oh, okay, you haven't, all right. I'll have to call him. If he does, I'll call him, and if he doesn't want it, then we'll do something different. Okay. Well, Tim's probably going to be on it anyway, I think, but maybe not. Okay. Teacher negotiations, that starts when?
I think that it might start toward the end of this year.
Okay.
Is that correct, or at least it will start to be organized?
I think so. I know it's after September, so I'd like to wait on that one.
Right, yeah, like August, maybe.
I want to wait on that one, because I want to do it, but I don't know if I can, so if not, then I'll assign it to somebody else. Administrator negotiations, when does that start?
That was just completed, and that was for five years, right? With an opener for...
Because, yeah, Dave was on it.
Right, there is a provision that, in January, so it would be this year, we'll talk about the one item, the health care.
Oh, okay.
So somebody needs to be on that committee, I guess, and I'm happy to do it if...
Would you like, I'd rather, if you've been there, I'd just soon let you do it.
That's fine.
Okay, good.
It should be a short opener.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And we have Finance and Personnel Committee. I don't think we've ever had anybody, we have our own finance or personnel. I think that's every, anything, I think the Principal usually brings something like that to the Board, so I'm not going to worry about that one. What about Policy? All right, I forgot Policy. Larry was doing Policy, I think. Do you want to still do that? Excellent, okay.
Well, I was on the Finance Committee and the Personnel Committee.
Oh, you were?
SU.
For the SU.
Oh, for the SVSU. Do you want to still do that?
I, yeah, I do.
Oh, okay, good.
Um, I know.
So that's not a subset of the SU Board, then?
Yeah.
Well, it is representative, or we try to have a representative.
From each school, okay. All right, you're right.
But it might be on the SU Board for each school. It's not on this agenda.
Right, so you would be qualified if you were the alternate?
Oh, she's been there, so that's, I think that would be good.
In the Finance.
Right.
Yeah.
But through the SVSU.
Right, okay. Good. Okay, and I think that's...
And you wanted to do Personnel as well, didn't you?
I believe that's it. Okay.
Will you get motion?
Yeah, I'm going to do that next. All right, Rick sent over a motion to move to authorize the Officers of the Board to approve interim Board warrants between regularly scheduled Board meeting dates. The Board of Directors will affirm the warrants at their next regularly scheduled Board meeting. So I need a motion to approve that. Second? Second. Discussion with that, anyone?
This is something we do every year.
I think this is the first year we've done this. So I think it's because he's probably busy, he's going to probably do between the budgets, we're going to start budgets again, and...
I think it's mostly like if you were to miss a meeting and that you needed to make up the, that you still needed to sign the warrants, that somebody could come into the Central Office and sign the warrants, and then they would be presented at the next meeting of the Board.
Good. All in favor? Okay. In your packet, you have the Code of Ethics. You read it over, look at it. You can sign it, or you don't have to sign it, it's up to you.
You going to pass one around for him?
You should be in your packet.
Why don't you just pass one?
Okay. Yeah.
You might want to blow. Sir, hold on.
Is this, oh, it's black, sorry.
Mine's black. All right, very good. Next on the agenda is the Citizens' Comments. Any Citizens' Comments? I realize you just got here, so let's...
I had to go over it.
All righty, okay. Next, we'll go to the Financial, the Treasurers' Reports. You have them in front of you. You have December 31st, January 31st, and February... All set? Hearing none, okay, all in favor, the Treasurers' Reports?
Just accepting them.
Except, yeah, except them.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
Someone.
All right, and a second. All right, David, good. All in favor, aye. Budget Status Reports in your packet. Anything on that?
I know we got two of them.
Yeah, I looked at, they're exactly the same, I don't, I think they just...
Different dates, if you look at them.
Really?
One is February, one is March.
One is March.
Well, there's the March, the March Current, the Current column shows, I believe, transactions during the month, and questions.
Okay.
Is this a new policy we're going to be getting?
I don't think so. Never gotten two before. This is the first time we've gotten two.
The one you've got for March 31st is only through March, it's printed as of March 7th, so it only has transactions through that day.
Yeah.
So there's nothing there specifically that, I just wondered if we'd gotten it because there was something we needed to be aware of.
I don't think so. I don't see any.
Nothing which struck my thinking.
All set?
I like having a month after long.
Okay, go to number five, it's New Business. I don't have any, well, I've got my stuff for my report, and I just brought it in.
Under New Business, you may want to know us down in the next, it's during my report, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. We have warrants, we have the minutes. There is January 29 minutes and February 13. Anybody have any questions on those? Hearing none? Okay. I want to give everybody a chance to look them over.
No questions.
So I was looking for them.
Okay, so we're all set with the minutes. Next, we have the warrants. And we have warrant number 1017 for $45,003.40. Warrant number 1018 in the amount of $71,824.21. Okay, hearing none. And we do have number eight, or no, excuse me, number six, we have a nomination for Laura Boudreau for the sixth grade Long Term Sub. And we also have Field Trips, March 29th, the Mont Pelerin, Vermont State House, Grade Six, and June 7th, New York City, Grade Six. And I need a motion to accept all those. Your second?
A second.
Yeah, all right, discussion?
On the Field Trip, correct? What does it mean, ready to move on for the trip to New York City? And it says, ready to move on to their new schools and write a written response about next year, and then it said somewhere...
Right, to the middle school or something?
Many are going to...
Yeah, many are just going to a different middle school.
It would be an expectation that each child would do a response about the trip as a final writing project before they move on.
And there's not many that are going to the same middle school?
Oh, they'll all go to the middle school. I think everyone, I shouldn't say that, Jen, I think almost everyone is going to the middle school.
The purpose of the trip, yeah, it is a little bit...
Yeah.
The purpose of the trip is end of year celebration for sixth graders, which, nice, many are going to different middle schools, sort of suggesting that this is the last chance they'll have to see each other.
That's not accurate.
Don't they have different houses at the middle school, so for in the mind of the sixth grader, they're going to be separated? I mean, it's, you know...
Thank you.
So that might be what they're thinking of. They could have different houses, like, so they are kind of separated. But this was written by Mrs. Clark. Oh, okay. That might be the perception.
Then the other question I had was Long Term Sub. Is that, that's just to fill the rest of this year?
Remainder of this year, the year leave has not been advertised. That's a question that I think we need to discuss at some point down on my report. But you're right, remainder of the school year.
Okay, all set? Everybody in favor of the Consent Agenda? Aye? Okay, unanimous? Okay. Committee Reports, SVSU meeting. At our last SVSU meeting, we had a presentation from Maura Hart, An Old Child Left Behind Coach, as a 30-minute presentation. We talked about Board Goals, Status of the Action Steps, talked about Policy, Draft School Calendar, Internet Use Policy number 6148 was adopted, and that's about it. Oh, under the Chair's Report, we talked, that's when we talked about the members for the SVSU, two members with an alternate, so that's why we're doing it this year for the first time. And that's about it, unless anybody else, unless Larry, you've got anything for SVSU?
I would just say that the calendar was approved by SVSU, and it's just waiting to go to the CDC Board, which will happen Monday night, the 18th. So by the 19th, I could send it out via email, because then it is an approved official calendar. And I know that people like to get it as soon as possible, but I've been waiting for the CDC to finish. The Calendar Committee made, you know, worked hard together to make it all work for our professional development and to be the best that could meet everyone's needs in this, our community, and in surrounding communities that also attend our school.
I don't know when the meeting was, but was it since the, since Town Meeting Day?
The approval?
No, the SVSU Board meeting.
No, that was before Town Meeting Day.
It was the last.
The last, thank you, yeah. Trying to think of the day.
Just wondering, the SVSU Board is going to have a conversation about looking at the budget?
The budget, yeah.
So that hasn't happened yet?
No, not yet. No, so you're safe, we're safe, right? Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Was there any significant changes to the calendar?
No, and it really still, it almost followed the same footprint as before. There was a couple slight changes where they wanted a little more time between the end of the grades and when they, when they would have parent teacher conferences, they wanted a week in between, so we sort of expanded that out, but it didn't really change significantly the days or the holidays. Pretty much it's starting after Labor Day and then ending as soon as possible. One thing that they have brought up, and I'll just bring it up for the sake of introducing the topic, there has been a lot of conversation about making the professional development time more effective in terms of having it be more consistently spaced throughout the year so that teachers don't just get a bunch of days at the beginning of the year and then nothing, or, you know, there's a half day in January and then a half day in March, and then that's about it. So they really are asking for a more consistent format that may involve like some monthly time that would be maybe a late start every, one day every month, or something like that that would add up to the same amount of time over the course of the year in terms of time that students wouldn't be in school. So they're just looking at some options and hope to bring some kind of approval to the Board.
I don't know for sure, but it seems as though there are fewer in-service days this year during the school year than there have been, you know, historically or in the recent past. Is that, maybe that's just my perception, but did we change things?
And I wasn't here last year, Dave.
I know you weren't, yeah.
But I do know that they changed something to have the five days right at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
In terms of having those days before Labor Day so that they could still start as early as possible, but right after Labor Day, and then not have to, because every professional day added into the calendar adds a day to the length of the year, which is the struggle that we have in trying to make the time used more effectively. Then the, then students would have to start before Labor Day, which is always a mixed opinion about that.
Historically, the in-service days had been spread more throughout the year. In the last three or four years, it's interesting that the committee has changed in their view that they were feeling that front-loading as much professionally well would have more impact on what we were doing with children, and so we actually did that. Now they're interested in making a change going back to something that had happened more store.
Oh, okay, that's good, thanks for your permission. And then the, I'm sorry, is that, the no children left behind presentation, what was the outcome of that? Was it just an informative session?
It's basically informative, it was a good presentation.
That I could actually send, there's a PowerPoint if you would like the PowerPoint. And it was, did you want me to put that a little bit?
Yeah, please, yep.
Maura Hart is an educator and a facilitator that is, was hired by the district through the Department of Education for schools in needs of improvement. So they, she's actually targeting her services with us for the middle school and high school this year. It's kind of, as I understand, it's going to be kind of a rotating focus where they would look at developments and goals that would help to improve student performance at those levels. But she's also working with all of us because she's implementing an online program called Green Mountain Star that is a program that helps every school look at what is their student data, and if they choose to use that program, to come up with a number of objectives for improvement, and then to sort of put them under the umbrella of three or four primary goals that the schools as a whole want to work toward. So she's really helping to facilitate the implementation of that Green Mountain Star program. And then we do have frequent, I guess, you know, about three times, four times a year, meetings with people from the Department of Ed who also come and meet with us as a district team and the schools and Maura to implement the goals and look at strategies that will help us improve performance.
Tim, you have a question?
Kind of the same question. My understanding is that we were phasing out No Child Left Behind in favor of Common Core, so I was surprised that we had somebody here talking to us about that.
Kind of different language. It really, and the No Child Left Behind is really meaning, you can, you can use those words or not, it's about meeting annual yearly progress, and no matter what test system, they are phasing out the NECAP test, and it's going, going to be called SBAC test, which is more focused on Common Core, so we're moving in that direction. But we will still have performance goals in terms of meeting annual yearly progress, regardless of what the test is. And I, I'd be hopeful that, we'll see what happens with the changeover, because there's going to be a lot of shift for the focus of curriculum, which is really in full swing in our districts. I think we're doing, we're doing very good work in implementing that. But that whole new testing system will be another whole change, and will, as you know, because you are kind of a data man, it'll change the whole baseline, so we'll have to sort of restart the whole system of looking at what is progress and what do we expect the norms to be for each grade level, so that'll be coming up in 2014, 2015. And Jim, you might have one to hand.
No.
Are we still trying to achieve that No Child Left Behind goal of 100%? Everybody gets to grade level?
Until 2014, and then, as you can well imagine, all schools will be in needs of improvement by 2014. So that's when the whole baseline will be reset, and we'll be looking at new ways to evaluate progress. I don't know if I'm giving you a good answer, Tim, but it's very, kind of a transition time for schools in terms of improvement.
I understand. You don't just turn No Child Left Behind off suddenly?
No, no, no. And some portions of it will stay intact, like teacher quality and all of the attendance that goes along with it. I mean, there are a lot of factors that they use in determining whether we're meeting our progress.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move to the Policy. It's number 5003 for bullying prevention, this is for adoption. Need a motion and a second?
Zoom.
All righty, discussion.
I think we've seen this go through quite a few times.
All in favor of the Policy? All right, good. All right, next is Principal's Report.
I have for you to consider from the State Department Highway Safety and Design, there has been for a number of years before my time, a flashing beacon indicating a crosswalk down by the bridge over the railroad tracks. There's never been a formal signed agreement with the State of Vermont, and we have, we have indicated to them the times that we would want it to flash, but by signing this, we become liable for its repair and maintenance.
I emailed all the board members copies of that along with a copy of the generator agreement, so, in case you had any other questions, so. Discussion on that.
So, the, uh, flashing, the, the light has been there and it hasn't been operating, is that?
It had been, but not functioning properly for some time. Uh, the state did come down and do an initial repair and are willing to work with us and an electrician to show them how, for instance, it's not doing, uh, it's not functioning properly because of daylight savings time, so we've gotta get that changed immediately. The other thing that we would be responsible for is paying for the utility, uh, bill for the electric service to the, to the beacon, which I'm sure won't be a lot of money. Uh, it will operate thirty minutes before and fifteen minutes after, uh, in the, uh, morning and fifteen minutes before school is released and thirty minutes after school being released. So, it's eight to eight forty-five, two forty-five to three thirty.
Is that normal practice?
It's their recommendation for the times, Jim.
But do most schools in the state of Vermont have to sign something like this for safety?
If you're going to have a beacon.
Really? That just seems odd.
It does.
That's putting too much responsibility on the maintenance and upkeep of.
You know, that's.
Power board, I mean, if we start messing with the wires and we get a new electrician in, uh, the whole town could go out. Right? I mean, if I'm up there, things.
They do talk about the obligation in B, in terms of the beacon, if it's within the right-of-way, and I, and I don't know if it isn't within the right-of-way, it stays the responsibility of the state. If, if it's outside of the right-of-way, then it's our responsibility. I don't know how wide Route seven A is, is a legal road.
Forty-eight. Well, I, the, the, the beacon is right on the road, I mean, it's just right on the bridge there. Uh, I suspect what they're talking about is if the beacon breaks, it's in the right-of-way, they'll come fix it. If it's, uh, you know, power down the road feeding the, the breaker, they're not going to take responsibility for that. The main thing that we need is to, for somebody J to, uh, be able to change the times when we go in, in and out of daylight saving time. That's all I would really imagine that would happen and maybe once in a while the bulb would go out. But I believe that routine maintenance would be in right-of-way by the state, like they just went into.
Isn't that fed off the pole?
I, I don't know.
How about, so, what, what do you think?
Yes, it's fed off the pole?
Yeah. That's right there.
So, are, legally, we're not allowed to touch the pole?
Well, you are to your own device.
I have a phone call, I need to.
Okay.
Maybe we should.
And what about access to the box to make the test, do you have that?
I would say that they're saying we should have access to the box and they'll show us how to do that, but I would not recommend that our maintenance people do that. I would say if we're going to take responsibility, it would seem that a, a licensed electrician should be responsible for maintenance of this.
Well, that's better, yeah. Somebody getting electrocuted.
Tell them we don't agree with that and we'd like to have somebody come down and talk.
But adjusting the time doesn't require electrician, do you think?
What does it?
Adjusting the time doesn't, doesn't need.
Change the time by an hour when we go in on daylight saving.
They'd have to come down and train someone, I mean, is that what they're saying, they will come and train somebody?
They absolutely will.
They, they didn't do that when they were here before.
They absolutely did not.
Who's been changing it before?
No one.
You mean when it goes to daylight savings?
Has not been operated properly.
Oh.
So, it's not operating.
Go open the box.
I am not going to go and open the box, nor am I going to direct Jay. If the board would like to direct Jay to open the box.
No, no, Larry?
We're certainly in favor of doing everything we can to get that light and keep it operational.
Yeah.
It was going this morning, didn't happen to be, um, at the right time, but it is in a key position. You cannot go up that hill without having it hitched directly. But, maybe we should table it until we have a little bit more information as to what's really involved.
Okay. We can do that, yeah, cause they want me to sign it and this Brian Sero, Sir, Sears, Siralas, probably Secretary Vermont Agency of Transportation has to sign it, so.
And where's he, is he in Bennington?
I doubt it, I'm sure he's up. Well, where's the nearest, uh, well, it's gotta be.
State garage is your nearest point of contact.
Right, okay. Now, where is the state garage now? It used to be in Arlington, wasn't it?
South behind Barrow.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't wanna discourage them, I mean, we've done a lot of work to get them to move.
Right. I didn't wanna, I mean, this was back in December, I think they sent this, so I don't want them to think we're not doing anything.
Did they call you or anything?
I, Larry and I would have happened to be down to the, um, town clerk's office and Margie said, "I've got something for you and it's, you have to sign this and get it, do it as quickly as possible." I said, "Well, wait a minute, this first, you didn't get this in December?" I said, "No." So, this is the first time I seen it, so I, I didn't wanna do anything before I brought it to the board and let the board know what we gotta do, that this is, we're gonna be responsible for this, so. But, did you?
Well, it's interesting, I, when you, I, I'm reading this letter again, I've read it a number of times, but they, they're saying that the Vermont Agency of Transportation shop is willing to diagnose the problem. It was discovered that repairs, uh, can be made within the highway right-of-way and there will be no cost to the town or school. If the ti- I guess I don't understand, if it's in the state's right-of-way, why are we signing an agreement?
I think they just want us to change the times on it, when it goes in and out of daylight saving time is the main thing.
I don't think there's any question of that visiting the state highway. We understood.
Right-of-way.
The, the right-of-way that they were proposing that day when they were paid us to visit. I mean, that extends well beyond that.
Yeah, the, the right-of-way down at the country store goes up to the, up to the doorstep, so the, the pole is, the blinker's in the right-of-way. So, they're gonna cover maintenance. I think all they're really asking is for us to push the hour button twice a year. It, it does help, I mean, when you come up that hill, uh, if you don't have that blinker, you come up that hill at forty-five because it's a thirty-five mile an hour zone and presto, you're at the country store and hitting that crosswalk where the kids are.
So, do you wanna call on that, Jim?
I have a call in, I, she did not return my call.
Okay.
So, what are you interested in finding out?
If we have to sign, I, I would assume, I, I'm hearing is if we have to sign this, and it, from reading this, the, the copy that I have, it seems like we have to.
I think you're right.
And if that's the case, that's fine.
What are we responsible for?
Yeah, what are we responsible for and what did they do before? I mean, it's.
And is your sign within the right-of-way?
Right, right, yeah.
I wonder if.
They said that in the front of the letter, didn't you just read that?
Well.
No, they say if your sign is in the right-of-way, they'll come.
If it is discovered, if it is discovered that it's within the right-of-way.
Didn't they say that they did the repairs because it was?
Initially.
Right.
They're now saying they're gonna continue to do that.
Right.
You know, in the interest of getting the clock adjusted so that it's actually functioning at the right time for another month or so, could we authorize Fran to sign that letter when he feels comfortable doing so?
Open the box.
No, open the box, I'd wear gloves.
I'll open the box, I've opened the box.
And, and maybe open the box if, if you determine that that's a safe thing to do and, um, so that we're not.
So, you don't have to bring it to them for an extended.
You can get the answers to these questions tomorrow or then you could sign, I mean, how that's done.
Also, who's qualified for the training and when, uh, how quickly can the training take place?
You know, it's a matter of pushing a button, like, as you say, if that's what we have to do, that's, that's fine.
I think Donna wants to open the box.
Sometimes they're locked, I don't know if we have a key.
Lock it, clippers.
Okay, so, so once we, go ahead.
Just, I, you want the sign, right, you want the flashing.
The flashing light.
So, you know, I think that you don't really have a choice about signing the paper
and then make arrangements to have the training and whatever your responsibilities are. Cause the, the power to run it is gonna be minimal and they rare, I, I, well, knock on wood, rare.
By only, by only you have a hesitation to be afraid and find out that there's a enormous upfront cost to, but there isn't, it's already flashing.
It's there, already there and working, it's a maintenance, it's sort of like a maintenance contract.
Okay, so I'll sign it once, once we find out what we're doing and.
Great.
It's not a problem, we don't have to bring it back before the board or anything. That okay with everybody? Okay, good.
The other issue, and again, I was going to present it to this, uh, same person, was the, um, three-foot-high crosswalk plastic that's on the side of the road today. There were two purchased, one has been borrowed by someone and, uh, not to be returned, I guess. Um, and initially, they were in the middle of the road, um, during school hours and I moved it to the side of the road, consistent with what North Bennington has been doing because that's where I've only seen any of these around and about. And I, you may want, Tim, you may wanna speak to the issue because you feel it should be in the middle of the road.
Yeah, the sign's supposed to be in the middle of the road, that's what it's designed for. And, uh, it's setting on the side of the road, it, it doesn't do anything, and I can tell you, I've done it a couple of times. You go out there and you drag that sign, you watch the traffic go by at forty miles an hour and then you drag that sign to the middle and the traffic immediately slows down, so it has in fact. And so, and, and the way it's meant to be used is, uh, in the middle of the road, so. But we don't wanna leave it in the middle of the road all the time because that's how the other one got stolen, so. What, the way it's meant to be used is to be put in the middle of the road during kid crossing times, which is what I've suggested that we do. And that I also suggest that we do something to keep it from getting stolen again, uh, to get, have them second stolen because it's probably only a matter of time before it goes. What I've suggested is that they, uh, that, uh, the crossing guards take it from the school to the middle of the road at crossing times and bring it back to the school afterward. Uh, Jay drives his truck down there in the morning, so he could put it in his truck and, uh, put it in the middle of the road. And, uh, Gary, who walks down there, I suggested some small hand cart, like a, uh, like a luggage cart that, uh, before all the luggage, all luggage had wheels on, you used to be able to get these little folding cars that would pop out and they had bungees on them and you could put it on with that. Uh, the sign is a little bit heavy, uh, it's mainly bulky, I think it weighs about thirty pounds. It's not hard to, to drag to the middle of the road, but, uh, moving it from the school on foot would, you wouldn't wanna carry it the whole way. I suggested to Jim and Larry and Fran in an email, there are other options that we could consider if we thought, moving it from the school to the crosswalk or to Bennington, but that's the one that I would recommend. The main thing is that we get it in the, in the median and then we do something to keep it from getting stolen.
Sidewalk and the travel part of Route seven A.
You know, I know North Bennington leaves theirs beside the road, so, I can't understand why nobody's stolen it yet, but. I think a borrower would.
Maybe that's the one.
On their demon.
A big difference with North Bennington is the side, the speed limit's twenty-five there and it's thirty-five here and that sign in the middle of the road has the effect of lowering the speed limit to twenty-seven.
My only concern, Fran, and board, why I have not gone forward with it, um, and again, that was a question I was going to ask this person. And I think that, uh, the school attorney should address the issue as the legal liability of the sign, um, injures someone because it struck or causes an action, what liability are we placing upon ourselves as a community? If you don't feel that way, I'll instruct Jay to put it out there in the morning.
Well, I'd, I'd rather cover all bases myself, um, I hadn't thought of that. I don't know what the legalities would be or if we, the school would be liable for repairing somebody's car or something like that. I like the idea of it being in the road, um, I just, the don't knows is questionable. What's the rest of the board, Larry?
Originally, we put those out last year, uh, wasn't the town handling that?
Correct.
Okay, and they didn't see any, uh, liability in doing that?
They never have, I've not had conversations with the town, other than they don't have time to do it.
Okay.
We own the sign. Uh, the town purchased it.
Could you have a discussion with the town?
Certainly could.
I think that would be wise and then see if they looked into any of the liabilities, if, if not.
No, I didn't, I didn't have any sense that they, they had any problem doing it, except for, what I heard was weather, that they didn't wanna do it during bad weather.
Well.
Because they may have been doing something else, they may have been plowing at that time. But during good days, they seem to be more than, um, happy to get on there and do it and they must have accepted the liability or, or assumed there wasn't any, but, you know, I'll, I'll ask.
We could ask that for now, just leave it beside the road and let's find out first and then if, if it's, it's, we're not liable, we, we'll put it in the road.
Great.
Okay.
But the, the understanding is the sign belongs to the town.
Right.
They purchased it and they were responsible for it now.
Okay.
Uh, that's not the way they see it, at least that's not the way Margie sees it.
Okay.
They, they thought they were doing us a favor by buying those signs and expected us to, uh, step up and take responsibility for.
Okay.
For using them.
That sheds more light on the issue.
So, don't expect them to buy anymore if this is.
So, have we asked any of our, um, law enforcement families that attend Shaft's Berry to monitor the speed at that point? For like a couple of weeks at a time?
I know that there have been times when down by David's home, there has been, um, a radar check, um.
One of the trailers.
Indicators, yeah. So, that has happened recently, I say recently, in the last six months.
Uh, it's during summer.
Yeah.
Have seen the sheriffs at the Mans's once in a while, early in the morning.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have one to sit on the other side of Jay's truck.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, where nobody, yeah, but, well, that's.
See what happens.
That's true.
People start slowing down. If anybody runs into one, we might just ask.
All right, so Larry will check with the town and we'll see what's what and we'll go from there. And hopefully, we'll do something in the, the following week. Okay, Larry? Thank you, sir.
Uh, the other thing that, just a little board direction in terms of the year-long, uh, substitute and the, uh, position replacing retired Jane DeSanto, um, I have not asked for an advertisement through central office. Not sure as to what the board would like to do, uh, for me to go forward and advertise, um, and get someone on board, by April or May, or wait until the new principal's on board, um, working with that person or having the new person do it completely.
If you wait until April or May and you're experienced, is that going to restrict the, I mean, limit the options? People have already found another job.
You will, in my opinion, lose good candidates, number one, or could. The other thing would be that, um, by that time, uh, contracts have been offered, signed, and you have to work through whether or not in Vermont, the building principal would release that person if, if we were to pick up an employed person. So, it does create some issue waiting, in my opinion.
And there's a long-term sub for sixth grade and the other position is?
I would like not to, to do it that way, David. Um, I, I think that I would like to make it a more broad offering, um, a year-long, um, intermediate. intermediate teaching position at Shasbury, and a full-time position. And then seeing where we go, rather than having a specific grade-four position and a grade-six tagged as a long-term. There would be one long-term for a teaching position. There would be one permanent posi, like permanent, I don't know if that's a good word to use, but a, a position that would be longer than that one year. Unless Donna has a different view of that.
Well, I think it probably should be done sooner than later. And I think I would like to have you in the process to hire the next teacher.
Larry?
Dave? Yeah, I tend to agree. I mean, you're the principal until June thirtieth, and normally you would make that.
Yep.
Great. Just want to make sure.
Normally, you would have them hired by the end of June.
Yes, that's true. Yes, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And the longer you wait, the less candidates are.
Okay.
Good. Oh, before I go on to kneecap, because we'll, we'll have some things to look at. Do want to report that on Friday, the town, after trying to find a major water leak, it was discovered with the line that feeds Shasbury School. I believe that the town water department person indicated that Shasbury meters out of their facility into the town, about a million gallons per month. And he had already hit the million gallons in two weeks. So it was a huge leak that was happening. And so, it was about ten or twelve feet onto our property on the Upper Drive. As you come from the east side of the firehouse, you'll see an unpaved area now. They, they did get an exact reading as to, and had a person from the, funded through the federal government that came in, and it was pretty interesting to watch him find that leak with his computer and all of the sensors. Pinpointed it. Interesting, it's not copper. It's a cast pipe, probably in the seventies put in. It was a clean snap, so that, working with North Bennington Water Department, they, they happened to have, that we'll have to purchase from them, a coupling that worked. And it was repaired in about a half a day. So we didn't lose any school times, which was great. So that's, I guess all I had to say, unless I could give you any other information. I don't, I have not gotten any bills for the repair and replacement out there.
The only thing I have, Jim, is that we're looking at, you say maybe it's, it'd be good to change that pipe from there to the, into the school?
The, the water department people, and Hayden was the plumber that worked with us doing the repair, indicated that sometime down the road, that should be a project that it would be replaced from leaving the road where the line comes down Buck Hill Road all the way to our school with a larger copper pipe. And larger, giving us the, or Shasbury the option, if at any time we were to go to a sprinkler system, it would, it would accommodate that sprinkler system, which makes sense. So I think it's something that should go on our maintenance plan, that we put online on our site, if you, if you have a chance to see that. And it should be something that, within the next three to five years, it would make sense. Jay indicated that Shasbury Town seemed ready to pay for the copper pipe. We just had to do the work, or have someone install it for us.
I may be wrong, but I thought that we sprinkled the old part, some of this years ago when we did the boilers and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. There are small, small portions of the school that do have sprinklers. The kitchen area has a, a small sprinkler system. And where the old boiler was?
Yeah.
Yeah, when that was a boiler, that was sprinkled, and that was the only section.
Okay, all right.
Any other? Okay.
No.
So, kneecap passed on. The first thing I passed on, it, it was a little busy, but I, I wanted to make sure that you at least had all of the percentage of children who were proficient or proficient with distinction from two thousand five through two thousand twelve with Shasbury Elementary School, SES, compared to the Vermont proficient, proficient with distinction percentage. So you'll see those numbers. If you're a number person, that those, those are for reading, for reading, math, writing, and science. And then the graph, which for me and some other folks got a little busy showing you reading, math, writing, and science colored, you can sort of see the trends there from five through twelve. I mentioned these at the town report, some of the changes that have taken place. And I only bring those forward as you, or as we try to plan, what, what do we do from this point forward, looking at our results? I think an important thing to keep in mind is that we have seven of thirteen relatively new teachers, not necessarily new to education, but new to Shasbury School, through retirements. And that's happened within the last five years. Our poverty rate has changed in the last eight or nine years, going from about fifteen percent up to forty-three percent. Shasbury itself is changing a great deal. We in two thousand nine, ten researched, did professional development, and then implemented new writing materials throughout the school. We did the same in the num, the years are reversed, but at eleven, twelve, we, it was really through the SU and Kathy Markus Curriculum Department implemented foundations for grades K one, two, three. And that's that primary reading program. Last year, we, again, researched math. We had a year-long math professional development with Gene Ward coming once a month and presenting a, a university Vermont course in math, and all of our staff took that. Areas, I'll stop there for a second and let you look at the next. I thought it might be easier if we just looked at two thousand eight through two thousand twelve, when we started doing some of the changes that we had been doing here as a staff. And then I'm just going to pass quickly right along, because I think this gets easier to follow, where you'll see just the reading assessments from two thousand eight to twelve. And again, Shasbury compared to Vermont. Math will be coming at you next. Writing will be coming at you next. And then science will be the last for you to see. I think I'll go right to, to science and writing, and I think.
Reading, math.
Yeah.
Writing, science.
So if you look at writing and science, and if you could put those sort of together down in front of you. And I think what comes into play is a clear picture to me and to, to the staff as we start to try to drill down and figure out, what have we done that's had an impact? And what do we need to continue to do to improve what we're, our students are doing in terms of performance on the kneecap, which will be going away in fourteen? And we'll be moving from a standard-based approach to the core curriculum, using, it will not be a paper and pencil in two thousand fourteen, but rather, it will be a computerized test for, for our students. We, we really have to look at, and I think that Donna would agree, district-wide, we have to develop something to address reading comprehension for all of our students. It's an area of concern, not only for me here at Shasbury and our staff, but for the SU. The next thing that I.
Sorry, just a second.
Sure.
So reading.
Do you want to look at reading first?
Just looking at reading.
Okay, we can do that.
We've been fairly consistent.
We have pretty much flatlined, staying in the.
Seventies.
Seventies.
Yeah.
Low seventies, mid-seventies, on occasion bumping up. You're absolutely right.
And the state, statewide average is, you know, within a point or two, or, you know, three. But it's not as though Shasbury is dramatically lower than the statewide average.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
You're absolutely right. When we look, when we looked at, or we, I'm looking at, again, writing and, and. And I'll look at writing first, where in two thousand nine, we looked at our writing materials, did professional development, presented new materials to our students, and we had a dramatic increase in our student performance. It's a one-year, be, just be careful when you look at that. But it's nice to see that what we did had a real impact on our students. And then you look at twelve, and you wonder what happened. Go to the same time over to science. So in two thousand nine, here at Shasbury, we started looking at, what are we doing in re, in writing? And so in two thousand ten, our writing, I believe, had an impact on our science scores and continued to do that until we got to twelve, and we had the same sort of outcome as we did in writing. So writing and science, in my opinion, mirror those years. One of the things that we did not do in preparing for the test in two thousand twelve was a short-term, four-to-six-week writing intervention for those students who were very close to being proficient, missing proficiency by a point, up to eight or ten points. We targeted the children who had shown us in the past that they had not performed well and constructive response in terms of writing during science and the writing test. So we gave them the four-week intervention during ten and eleven. We had good results, making sure that we didn't have any of our students who we pretty much could identify would fall through the cracks. And that's not a great way to say it, but that's what was happening. But by doing that intervention, we had great results, better results than in the past. It's interesting that we have in-house data that clearly shows that without that intervention, and that's the only difference, that's the only difference, that our students did not perform as well. So what have we planned? I've already sat with the fourth-grade teacher for, that will administer the science test, and that will be coming up this spring. We have identified about nine of our twenty fourth-grade students who will, who, who have shown us that they struggle with constructive response, because that's an area that is very difficult for students to write in. And we will, using one of our title people and Kathy Zimiana, provide the students who were, who made proficiency in the past by a point or two. We're going to draw them in to make sure that they're, they're very ready for the, for the assessment. But also the students who are within ten or twelve points of being proficient, to try to see if we can, can do something short-term, a short-term intervention. All of the students will have intervention within the classroom as a whole group. This is really geared toward two or three students at a time, meeting with an adult for about thirty minutes. And it'll take about twelve half-hour times in the next few weeks for the students to do that. The other thing that I think is, I, I think that indicates that we're, we're making, we're going in the right direction. But what do we need to do to make sure that we continue? Today, at staff meeting, I asked the folks who chaired the writing, because it was a committee that brought forth the writing proposals to the whole staff, I asked them to prepare for May or June, when the new principal was on board, to go over what is it that we did to make a difference? And so that it continues, we want to present that to, to the, to the new principal. But we also have to make sure that we don't forget the seven people who are new in the last five years, to go back and refresh, this is what we agreed to in terms of writing, and we're going to do it in math. Sarah doesn't know it, but the staff did volunteer her as chair of the math committee to go back and do about a ten or fifteen minute for the whole staff with the new principal here, so that everybody's hearing the same message again. And we're making sure that we're on the same page in terms of the initiatives that we have started. And I think that next year should be, and my bet is that, that the SU might be ready to move on our reading comprehension push, I would hope.
I think writing is number one at this point.
Okay.
But comprehension really is, it really is closely related to vocabulary.
Correct.
I think that vocabulary is a piece of both of those.
You're ab, you're so right. You're so right.
And I think that it is one of the areas where you see dramatic changes in performance correlated to free and reduced lunch numbers.
Improved writing. It's interesting, when we started looking at writing in two thousand nine, we identified that as being the area that needed the most improvement. But what I've heard just in the last month, the state has said clearly that schools that look at writing first and develop a good professional development around writing and, and good materials for students, show the most improvement in the state, which was nice to see that we sort of took the right approach, I think.
And I think that one thing that, for, I think that the testing has kind of created the division, but writing and reading go hand in hand. They are like receptive and expressive language. It's the same way with speech and language. And so, if you stop on either one half of that developmental cycle, it will impact both parts. And so we have to, they go together. And it's easy to forget when we have to focus on reading tests or any of the testing that we do. I think that sometimes we lose the focus that writing is a major part of all of those different subject areas. And so we have to notice that it needs an extra attention. And it's something that young students need to be taught. It's not, doesn't come naturally, and it doesn't stick with them easily to learn how to give a focused answer to a question in writing. And the more they are empowered to do that, the more readily they also will answer questions on a test, which what, what we find a lot of times is that we just score low. You know, if it's, if you can get one to four points, students are getting one or two points. But the more they learn about the quality of writing, doing that in response to any question, it improves the scores overall.
In addition to, do you want to ask a writing, or can I go on? I just wanted to say a little bit about the reading piece.
About reading.
The change, the change SU-wide was the implementation of foundations, a highly structured phonetic approach to reading. And we have been doing it here in Shasbury. This is our third year. So our third graders, our, our first graders, second graders, and third graders should lead us down the road to better performance, because they have had this very structured, and all of them are getting that highly structured program, which connects to spelling.
And you will see a bump. You'll boom.
So that, that again is the hope. It's, our, our fourth, fifth, and sixth, seventh, sixth graders have not had this program, so.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that, are you just, are you just focusing towards the test? Are you just at, you know, just having them learn these skills just for the test? And how does that?
I don't think so, Jen. I, I, you know, I, I think about that often, because I recall the first year that we did it, Larry actually asked that question. I recall him that evening asking that question. And it was a very valid question. Are you really just teaching to the test? And I say that we're not. I say that we're, we're trying to develop children who produce high-quality writing. And it's something that takes practice. It takes a revisiting of the skills that we have taught them, because they're not, as, as Donna said, they don't hold it. Many of the students, and I say many, for us, maybe thirty or forty percent of our students don't hold it without some sort of intervention.
Consistent.
Yeah.
Personal note, my daughter was in this category.
Yes.
And she has followed through with that. She's an exceptional writer. And I think it is because of those. She's an exceptional writer, and I think it is because of those, that one-on-one, so. I have to go, I'm sorry. I keep cutting you off.
Sorry. The reading is assessed at several grade levels?
Well, on the kneecap, what we're looking at right now, kneecap, our reading assessments would be grade three, six, here at Shasberry.
Three through six.
Three through six. Now, we do do assessments in grades K one and two. The MAP testing, three times a year, would give us an indication if our students are, are showing growth. I think that's the most important thing. And then areas that we may be missing in terms of instruction or instruction that individual children or groups of children might need. So, different assessment, but we are, we're assessing from kindergarten and preschool, really, all the way up through.
Okay. And this is the, these are the results that are used to, for no child left behind, for adequate yearly progress?
That's correct.
So, we made progress between two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, whether it was adequate or not, I don't know.
Not enough.
Not enough, okay.
Not enough according to the state in terms of adequate yearly progress because it's, it's a, it's a, it's an indicator that changes, and please jump in if I'm not explaining this. It's an indicator that changes, and it has changed since two thousand and five every three years. So, the bar started here in five, and then that fourth year, for the next three years, the bar changed again, and it will change again until we get to fourteen, where a hundred percent of our, or near a hundred percent of our students will be accepted.
That's correct. Yeah. You know, I think we all struggle when we, or cringe when we hear about the kinds of, of classwork that students entering college have to take. Media work in reading and writing and arithmetic basics. And it seems that, you know, it goes, probably goes all the way back to these grade levels, and there's, you know, a lot that we can do potentially. I do wonder, what, what's a realistic goal here? And are there, I mean, is saying we're going to have a hundred percent realistic given the fact that there are-
It is not.
Developmental challenges that some students will have? Is ninety percent realistic? Is, I mean, at seventy-six percent?
I think eighty-five to ninety percent could be realistic for Shasberry. I'll get off just a little bit and go where, if Jim Harwood couldn't rule it for a while. I think that we should completely go away from a standard-based approach to measuring a child's proficiency. The state has said, at this level, grade level, you're going to be this height. At this, you're going to be here. It doesn't matter where you came to, to us. All of, all of our students will perform at the same level, they won't be proficient. It's much like saying, my daughters are both five feet tall. My wife was five feet tall, or wa, or is five foot tall. Both of our grandmothers are five feet tall. For them, for us to expect the pediatrician to come in and say, your daughter's going to be six foot tall, would just not be a reality. So, my point really being, shouldn't we, shouldn't we be looking at, and we could through MAP testing and possibly through the new testing, I'm not sure, I've not seen it yet, but shouldn't we be measuring where a child's at at the beginning of each school year? And then, children are generally in school for nine months, so we would expect nine months of growth. If they're not, then maybe we have to look at why haven't we had our children have nine months of growth? But if they were making, every child that made nine months of growth, depending upon where they started, I think we could say that we're doing an outstanding job. But we don't use that model, we don't use a growth model. It's a flawed system, this is a flawed system.
Primarily because it's, it's a summative assessment, which means it's once a year given to the students, and it doesn't show the progress or stimulate progress as much as like the MAP testing, which is called a formative assessment, that you give frequently over time so that you can understand and correct instruction or whatever the student needs during that timeframe instead of waiting until the end when you take a test like this. So, this can be a little misleading, and I would also caution that in a school this small, these numbers are highly variable from year to year with the small population in each group. And also, that from year to year, it's a completely different group of students. So, you have to realize that these-
Not for reading and math, though.
Oh, because this is just, this is an average.
Reading and math would be-
But in the grade five-
That's correct.
You can't, it's a different group of kids. So, it's, you have to just be cautious about how you look at the data.
Donna, do you know what assessment's going to look like once we get to Common Core? Is it going to be a big, all-high-stakes, once-a-year test, or are they going to-
Yes, it's going to be called the S-Back instead. They're already preparing us by sending out sample questions, and we have been working with staff in terms of looking at some of those questions, and then how do you, because they're very different. How do you format your instructions so students will be able to respond to those kinds of questions? So, it's, it's a huge, going to be a huge change. And I would also say about MAP testing, because we were talking about looking at their data, they are starting to use more Common Core-type questions.
Yeah.
And so, the expectations are much different. And there has been a jog in student performance because, again, we've changed the baseline, and so, the expectations are different. And so, now we're seeing a big jump down. Everybody's a little discouraged because it's like, oh, how do we compare now? But we'll just have to grow into the changes, and it'll be a transition period.
Yeah, and I don't mean to, but just to finish a little bit. In April, our fifth and sixth grade will pilot, we're one of three or four schools in the SU that will pilot the new Common Core test using the laptops. So, we'll get a better, we'll get a better look then.
Which is also about using laptops in math, using laptop, using online tools like a ruler to measure an online picture. It's just very different that some of the skills are going to have to be built to accommodate the online test. So, it's quite significant.
Is it Donna's and Jim's opinion that the more frequent testing like MAP is a better way to go than the actual year-to-year testing? But that's not something we ever get to decide, that's, that's maybe it.
Well, the, the MAP testing is through our, our district, our, the SU. We are also in other schools, you're not using the Ames Web or the-
Yes, we are.
Oh, are you? Yeah. There's another test called Ames Web or Dibbles that is done, is used for early literacy skills, which is very, very closely monitors each student individually.
Limited population here, but we are using it.
Yeah, because that can be very helpful in knowing, are they learning? And the focus there really needs to be on what are they learning, not what did we teach? And that's what the assessment helps you understand, and the teachers grow to appreciate that kind of data in terms of, well, is my instruction working? It's a good, it's a good direction. It doesn't mean it's like a test-focused environment as much as we use that to monitor how much students are learning. So, that, in that way, it's different than the once-a-year, at the end-of-the-year test.
Larry had it.
Oh, Larry. I just had some concerns about expectations, you used to, expectations. I wondered, in your opinions, are expectations higher than they have been?
The Common Core is going to be much higher, yes.
And how long is that process going to take for everybody to get on board? I mean, it, it sounds like we're still just catching up to these scores and making sense of this. So, now we're switching again, and is it going to be another five, six years before we have any accurate data that's going to really-
If that's what I was saying, it's going to change the whole baseline. It's not going to compare to this, so you're not going to be able to go back to ten, ten years ago.
Right.
I think what we could, what we should look at, Jen, is because MAP testing is switching more toward Common Core sorts of questioning, that we, I think in the SU, we'll be a little ahead of some schools who have not been involved with MAP testing and our students understanding how that testing process takes place. So, I think it could, before our students have to take the test, give us a good indicator of students that might need short-term interventions, and why and what. You can really identify what those interventions would be and what you would target for a skill or concept.
When you say short-term intervention, does that intervention take, in your opinion? Does it stay with the child, or does it just get them past that next hurdle, which is the test in front of them?
That's a good question. I think I would go back to Donna's answer when she talked a bit about going back over and over and over again. I think there, there are some students that can be exposed to it one time or already come to us and have that skill or concept. There are another group of students who need refreshers in a whole group. There are, there are a core group of kids, and I would bet that there are thirty percent of our population that yearly will have to have refreshers and reminders beyond just whole group if we're going to be successful. Just like if we're doing any task, some of us need to do it over and over again to become proficient. Thank you, yes.
Just before I have Donna, if you want to leave, that's okay. Or you can stay, I forgot to tell you. Because you've got the warrant, so you're all set. But anyway.
Besides, you can sneak right under the left of the camera. Just invisible.
Sorry, I should have told you that earlier, but I didn't. So, you didn't chew me out later. Go ahead, Donna.
And I don't, I don't, we had a nice discussion on your data, and that, that's great, Jim, for bringing that forward.
Yes.
But I just short, I just wanted to quickly bring you up to speed on the principal search. We did meet again, we've had the position posted since I, since we first brought it to the board, and the application period ended on March first. Then Jim and I looked at the collected applications that we had. We had thirty-two on-
Thirty-seven, oh, thirty-two school spring.
Thirty-two on school spring that were specifically for our posting that we put up. And of those, Jim and I both looked at all of them, and we used some sort of major sorting criteria to look at all thirty-two, mostly looking at whether they were certified either here or in another state as a principal. I looked mostly at the ones that were from our New England area that had, had some experience around this area. Also, whether they had experience as an elementary school principal and if they had any experience as an elementary teacher. So, those were kind of our major, were there others that you looked at? As a, as a sorting tool. And then we brought seven of the, of the resumes that we, that we found together, worked together for a little while to try to coordinate our view of the different resumes that came before us. And we brought those seven to the committee. And then we looked at the, each of those, and I do, I have the little form that we used. Each of us looked at the resumes and looked at their experience as an elementary principal or administrator, and as a teacher, their commitment to long-term employment, which if some of you have looked at resumes, you can see if someone has changed frequently during their career path. Their quality of instruction or assessment that they have been involved with, for instance, looking at data as we did tonight. Teacher supervision and evaluation, behavior management, experience or philosophy, and their communication ability and relation, relationships with both their staff and their students, and their writing abilities. So, each of the members of the committee looked at a resume and then gave feedback to the whole group, and of that, we chose three candidates that we are going to interview next Thursday, right? The twenty-first, on the twenty-first.
Starting at two.
So, we're moving along. I think we have some good candidates, and we will keep you updated on that progress.
My report, the generator agreement, I emailed it to all the board members. I didn't know, Jen, you had a question on it before. And I had asked Rick about it before, and it's basically a boilerplate agreement. I mean, we can ask the town, I haven't talked to anybody at the select board yet, whether the, I, I may talk to Karen about it, because she's the one that contacted me before. So, I didn't know if anybody had any other questions on it before I talk to the select board.
What will you say at the select board?
See if this is, is agreeable-
Oh, there-
Between the town and the school, basically. It's, I don't know.
Town meeting, they seem to be on board.
What's that?
At the town meeting, they seem to be on board.
Yes, yeah. So, I mean, I'll go there, and if we can get an agreement, fine, and I'll bring it back to the board, okay? Yes, Larry? Thank you. Good man. We have, we have a, Jay had called Bodine paving to pave the areas out here. We have the new paving at the back area, I would have assumed that'd be the parking lot out here, for fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Resurfaced the east side, I'm sure that's over here, fourteen thousand, two. The north side, fifteen four, and resurfaced the entranceway, ten thousand six seventy, for a total of fifty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I don't know, now with the thing with the pipes, I kind of tend not to want to do paving before we do the pipes. So, I don't know if we want to act on this tonight, or-
Just wanted to, you'd have the information.
Right, so, we have that, we'll maybe discuss it at the next meeting. But if we can get something on how much this would cost to do the-
All new, new line?
The new line.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah. Because I, I, I've seen towns before, they blacktopped the road, and a month later, they're digging up the sidewalks and the new pavement again. So, I'd really rather cross our Ts and dot our Is before we go paving anything, I guess, at this point.
No, I can do that. But does the school own the, all the way around the firehouse, both sides?
No, I think it stops right where the end of the gate is over here-
Yeah.
On the drive-through and right where the fencing is. And we may own the parking lot on the, if you're looking at the firehouse here on the left side, but no, we don't own any of that.
And the, and the leak, where was the leak?
The leak was on the east side as you exit the school parking area.
Yeah, right on this side.
It was on our side?
On that side, and it's about ten or twelve feet onto the school property.
And at the same time, if we're going to run a line for fuel oil to the generator, that may be the time to do all that stuff. I, I don't know, it depends on what it's going to cost us.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's just, you know, can I, I'm going to give that back to you, just so-
Yes, I will keep that.
Don't lose that. Other than that, that's all I had. You've got your future meeting dates, April tenth, May eighth, and June twelfth. You've got your enrollment figures for March. And we need an executive session unless there's something else. So, we need a motion to go into executive session. And a second. Are you all in favor? Aye, there you go.
It's for the two reasons.
For ESP negotiation update and personnel.